Evening, Rich.
My good evening.
You all ready for Christmas?
Just about, just about. We're doing a Zoom Christmas with some of the kids on Zoom and two coming over.
It's like kind of a mixed bag this year.
Yes. I'm not, my picture is not showing, is it?
No, your video is off right now.
Yeah.
And you're the only one from the commission I see, and then I see somebody from the public. James, is that James Mangan, is that you?
That's just gonna start.
Yes, it is, Lydia. I mailed you earlier today, too.
You had, you had a question about the best way to reach us via email.
Yeah, you spoke to, to Greg Wozniak.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Are you part of the group?
That'd be quite, huh?
You're part of the group that had come up with an alternate plan?
Yeah, yes, so I'm just gonna mail you what we have, and then you, you said that we'll just speak like next meeting?
Yeah, if, if Greg said he was available, hopefully you are too, but we'll, we'll have it on the agenda specifically for January, so you guys can present your idea.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you. Eric, I see you're on.
Hello.
How are you today? Are you ready for Christmas?
Not even close. Even close.
Everyone else is all ready, ready, set, and off they go?
I have a lot of wrapping to do still, but other than that, I'm done. Don't need to shop anymore and have.
LL Cool J or? Oh, Rich, got it. Thanks, Rich.
I was talking about presents, but. Okay, well, why don't we get started? Call the meeting to order seven oh two. We'll be on the lighter side today. Colton relayed that he can't make it. I, I assume Kirsten is planning. Oh, here she is. So, looks like everybody but Colton will be on. And.
Grambling away from their ovens so the cookies don't burn.
Yeah, exactly. So let's just do a quick roll call. Rich?
Here.
Eric?
Hello.
Kirsten?
Here.
And Lydia's here, and Colton Chandler won't be able to make the, the meeting tonight. I want to open it up to any citizen comments. I see one, one citizen's on. I'm not sure. James, if you had anything to say for the, the entire group on the agenda tonight?
Um, no, thank you, though.
Sure, thanks. Okay, first order of business, wanted to confirm the start time for the 2021 meetings. I know when we talked with Greg Butler and the others in Ingram, they requested that we start the joint meetings at 6:30 PM versus 7:00 PM. But I wanted to see for the rest of the meetings, what time everybody wanted to start. Should we consistently go with 6:30 so that every meeting is always 6:30? Or do you want to keep our, our meetings 7:00 PM in 2021 and, and meet quarterly at 6:30 with Ingram?
That's great.
I'm pretty flexible on that.
Yeah, 6:30 is fine.
Eric, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I said it's great. Six thirty is fine.
Six thirty, I think. Okay, we can just start at 6:30 for all meetings next, next year. I'll let Charisma know. Okay, and then, I didn't have it on here, but can we just do a quick touch base for workshop four and what date might work for everyone since January 27th is no longer our day?
Yeah, sorry, guys. I, I found out I have to work that night. I was gonna let you know tonight and saw your email yesterday and kind of figured I need to send this update.
Yeah, no, it was good that you sent the update because then Charisma didn't move forward with the advertisement, so do, do we think we would still wanna shoot for January, or should we push it to February?
What's wrong with February 3rd? Anyone?
Not a problem for me.
Just a sec to check.
February 3rd is fine for me.
I am fine with that.
Okay. I will reach out to Colton separately and confirm, and if he's a go, then I'll have them re-advertise.
I have a hold on it, but it's, it should be coming off because that is the, it should be coming off.
Do you want to move it to the 10th in case? Would that be better?
Um. I would prefer the third, honestly.
Okay. All right, so I will text Colton and see, do we want to do 7:00 PM again?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Okay. Next order of business, just wanted to give an update. I had forwarded the email, so you probably all, all saw, but Strategic Solutions, our consultant for that map grant, had reached back out to DCED, and she was able to, Chelsea Puff, the, the main point of contact there, was able to confirm for us that DCED did receive the state funding that they were expecting at the same level from the 2019 year. So what that means is Nick, the contact at DCED, still feels hopeful that we'll be awarded our, our application. But the actual timeframe for award is pushed back. We had originally been hoping to hear back by December, but now it's looking more like the second quarter of 2021. So I have, I have talked with Phil Levaser, the council president, just asking him to reach out to Sam Nucci at Ingram, the Ingram council president, and see if we'd like to move forward with EPD ahead of hearing back about the grant. So he's gonna try to run that to ground, see if we can kind of sign EPD's proposal to start the work ahead of hearing back from DCED, knowing that the grant itself is retroactive. But in case that, you know, doesn't work or doesn't go through, we'd at least be able to start in the spring. I did give EPD a heads up about the timeframe, and they plan to issue kind of a, a letter addendum, just acknowledging the potential timeframe changes and resetting their schedule from the proposal based on a, a spring of 2021 start date as opposed to January. So they said they would send that on in the first week of January. So I think we're in pretty good shape on that.
How does it get awarded to them?
We, we have to sign it. Crafton and Ingram have to jointly sign the proposal and officially accept their proposal as a professional service.
All right, so, so is there a council meeting needed before it gets signed, or if it comes in, I would imagine Phil and Greg are the signers, right? Signatures.
Phil, no, Phil and Sam Nucci would be.
Sam Nucci, sorry, yeah. Phil and Sam would be the signatures. Do they need to go to a council meeting? Or do they have authority just to sign it because it's already been, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, they don't, I don't think that we need to wait necessarily for the EPD update for them to sign it. They could accept the terms of the proposal at any time, which is what I have asked Phil to reach out to Sam Nucci about, see if both boroughs are willing to essentially sign the, the proposal to start the professional service contract without first hearing from DCED whether we're gonna be granted the funding.
Yeah, so so remove DCED and just in terms of governance inside of
Yeah.
the two borough councils. If we sign today, they can start today. And what would be?
They would start January, but yeah.
If we sign today, they can start tomorrow-ish. What is preventing the signing from happening today?
Neither council has brought it on their agenda.
So it has to go to council agenda before signing, or because it's been to council, do they have to?
I don't think, I don't think either council president has actually put it on the agenda to vote to move forward with EPD.
It was never on the agenda, at least in the last three or four months.
Well, then that's our ask, right? Our recommendation.
We already did. We, we recommended that Borough, that Crafton move forward regardless of the, the DCED funding back in October. That was a motion we made. They have not acted on it. Ingram has not, Ingram Borough Planning Commission has not made the same motion to its council, to my knowledge. We talked to Greg about that in the last joint meeting, and he was supposed to be, yeah, floating that.
He said that his people didn't really know anything about it, and that was kind of him because he hasn't really paid attention to them about it and hasn't conveyed much to it, and they were confused when he brought it up. I remember him saying that, and they needed educated.
So on our, on our end, it's in our council's court. On Ingram's end, it may still be partially in Planning Commission's court.
I, I think it would behoove us to ask Crafton Council, get it out of our hands. We shouldn't be dealing with this. It's not our, it's not our money to spend. We just made a recommendation. We don't have any decision authority. We should be removed from it. It should be placed into their hands, and we should make a recommendation, in my opinion, that not only do they sign it before 12:31, if they can, to sign it before 12:31, but also to ask the, the consultant to put out some sort of a, something that we can share, some sort of a summary abstract like a press release, something that our borough can share, our boroughs can share with the community as to what it is, something coming from them because they know what it is that they're working on, something that, you know, they put out a simple statement, a memo, as if it were a press release, not asking them to incur the expense of a press release per se. I think that would be useful for us to promote that as one of those things that is up and coming, something that's impactful with a professional explanation of what it means. What does anyone else think about?
I think once, once it's, it's finalized, the EPD is the consultant in the, in both boroughs' eyes. I think we can work on a statement. It, it's in, it's already in council's hands, and I've, what I'm trying to relay to everyone here is that I've nudged them to push forward. In the last week, I've, I've talked to Phil directly about him approaching Sam Nucci about signing it jointly. And from Crafton's perspective, even if they sign it tomorrow, they can only sign on to half of the fees.
Right.
Because it's a joint proposal, so that we need, you know, both boroughs.
But it puts, it puts heat on the other party to say, oh geez, did we agree to this?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
You know, because if not, then it's February. You know what I mean? Like, this has carried on for a year and six months. I mean.
I am with you.
You know, put a pin in this, put a fork in this thing. It's gotta be done at this point. So, and I, you know, and I think it's a, it's a good benefit to every collectively. I think it's a good benefit for the people who know what the heck they're doing with this thing to put out a little statement that we can put on Savvy Citizen or the website or, you know, that sort of.
I think it's a great point. The website especially because so many, so many of the projects are being highlighted on the website. This should be highlighted as well.
Right.
So I, so since we've motioned for council to accept the proposal, I don't think there's any more motions that we need. But I can, I can ask directly for the vote to come on the next council agenda. So I can, I will send Phil a request for that. I, I don't know what he already has planned, and it'll be right after Christmas, I think, is their next meeting. So I'm not sure if they'll be able to fit it in, but I can request it.
I know that we motioned for them to proceed with EPD, but now that we've heard back from Chelsea and DCED, even though it's not conclusive, is it worth another motion to, like, recommend that they proceed in advance of the DCED grant? Because the, the motion that we approved last time was just simply to proceed.
I think we worded it as proceed regardless of DCED funding.
Okay, I, I don't recall how we worded it. That was already in there.
So, so Chelsea Puff has only communicated as of December 4th with, I don't know some of these names, with you and Butler, right? And then you sent it on the 4th right away on to the rest of the people on this list. I don't know who Stecco is and et cetera, but.
That's like the secretary for Ingram. She's like a person. Ingram Borough.
So is council, yeah, there's Phil. So Phil's the only one from council on this. Yeah, we should, council really needs to have a common email, don't you think? Like, that should go, like, something like this should go to all of them, so they should know. We could tell them, come on, get on this damn thing. We're sitting here waiting, 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 16, 17, 18. How many months you want to count to? You know what I mean? We're all going gray over this. This is crazy.
I, I CC'd Phil because he's the president and he has control over the agendas for the council meetings.
All right.
Feel, I mean, feel free to forward that on to any other council member you see fit. I have no problem sharing that type of information. I just, I kept it to the, the key players that had been.
I get it. You're very, you're very proper. Like I said, I'm just, I'm tired of talking about this. Just get it out of our laps and do it. I mean, it's, it's not hard.
I'm all about this project. I, I've been hoping for it for years now. So at, at least it'll be in the near term, even if it doesn't start early January. I'm very hopeful it'll be started by spring, so. So with that, does anyone have anything else to say? Do you want me to find that motion, Kirsten, with that, the, the wording of it?
Why?
Just the, just.
Best Phil to deal with it, but put it in his laps. They get this, get this done. We're done recommending. We don't have to work this hard. You know what I mean? This is, this is governance. That's their bailiwick. You know, we make a recommendation. If you don't want our recommendations, we don't need to show up and do this stuff. Do it. You know, or, or tell, you know, tell us you don't want our opinion. I'm fine with either.
Yeah, I, I'm not too concerned about the wording. I, I just was listening to what you guys were saying and thinking, if, if we think we need to do anything, should we just tell them again, we want them to go forward and clarify, we want you to go forward now? I, I don't recall if we were that. I, I don't recall if we were that.
So I'm sending, everybody's on this. I'm gonna send this right now. Make it short and sweet. Phil, what is it going to take to get the, the borough to sign it and start January? And ask the consultant to put a presser of some sort out that we can put on the website? Right? Done. It's in his court. We're done. We don't have to talk about it. I sent the hi-fi, not Phil, but Phi. Hopefully he'll figure that out. I just realized I typed it, but whatever, right? I mean, seriously. Seriously, this has been going on, you know? Next thing you know, EPD is gonna go out of business because they're retiring. You know what I mean? I mean, this has been going on for 30 years, it seems. Sorry.
I think, I think they have other things going on. But on, on that topic, one, so let's move to the Master Parks Plan. I sent the latest update that Russ had sent before he left the borough. You know, now, now Doug, I think I sent that email to everybody. Now Doug samples the, the interim manager. But that last email string about the Master Parks Plan basically described where we are with it. It, it isn't likely to start. The process isn't likely to start until early 2021. And the borough is to use a consultant, so there would be an RFP, either an RFP issued or the borough would go directly to a consultant that they would like to work with for professional service. And there will be a steering committee created for that work. So I think planning commission will be involved to some extent, but the steering committee will be much more heavily involved in the creation of the documentation. That, that was kind of a follow-on. There was some questions about how it all would work from the last meeting. So I wanted to get back to everybody about how it will work. In my last conversation with Phil this past week, he mentioned that EPD, and we knew this because I had run to ground the last park, Master Park Plan or Park Development Plan. I forget exactly what it had been called about 10 years ago. But the firm that did that work was EPD. So Phil mentioned perhaps just going with EPD for the update as well, just to kind of keep the momentum with, with it so that the consultant isn't starting from scratch. They would already know exactly what we had done and be able to build from it more easily than a new consultant would be.
That makes all the sense in the world.
That's up to council. I, I said that would be fine with me and it's not a terrible thing to have the same firm be working on two projects for you at the same time because I think it makes them want to do a good job for both. So that's the.
Good for business for us. So you're telling me this sucker, this like million-page-long thing about a park that I've never heard of, that you're telling me after all of that was the trolley trail. I, I could not piece that together. It's like, what is that address? I couldn't understand it. Anyway, so you're telling me that this, this, this sucker is, so I'm curious about it because it says supplement, right?
There are a few, yeah, there's like an original document and then there was a supplement created later. Susan O'Connell was the main.
I think it's great. I, I gotta say, I think it's, it's really great. It's well put together. I, I never put together that environmental planning and design. I thought that was like a division of Crafton or something. You know what I mean? I have, I don't think.
Yeah, no, that's that same, that's the same consultant that's doing this. That will be doing the zoning.
I mean, I, I read this and thought it was, you know, very well done. I didn't understand exactly actionably what it meant, right? But I know that it, it created opportunities for funding that did not exist before. And I mean, it's shovel-ready for them to, you know, find the document and update it. It's not a ton of money.
And we only have $26,000, I think.
That's what I mean.
And the main thing I believe that's missing from it is all the CIT, all the conceptual stuff that Crafton's been talking about for the CIT area. And probably a lot of the trail information that came out of the comp plan after, the comp plan was done after that other plan was. So any other walkability priorities would need to be included in the updated version of the Master Parks Plan.
Yeah, I, I tell you, I mean, you know, I just pulled it up as we were talking. The before and after of some of these, you know what I mean? You know, where we were in 14, where we are in 20. It shows anybody that, that there's stuff, not the word I'd use on a street, but stuff getting done. I think it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's impressive, you know? And I think that council's done a good job and everybody's done a good job to, to make, you know, kids a priority. Because, you know, things were in decent shape back then. You know, I wouldn't say good, but now they're in, compared to this, really good shape. You know, it's going in, you wanna, you know, anybody who wants to invest in a community, they want to invest in somebody that's, that's using money well and going in the right direction. I think that the update of this plan could be a really, a really nice, you know, kind of capstone, so. Cool. Is there anything that we need to do? Like give them an endorsement? Go forward and charge with EPD.
Not at this time. I told Phil that that made a lot of sense to me, but I asked if there was anything he needed from Planning Commission officially and he, he said no because it's a professional service.
Super duper.
So at this point, I think we're in a holding pattern on that topic, but just wanted to give everybody that update. One thing, so since it's December, I wanted to just make sure we kind of closed out some of the public comments we received on the website. Make sure we're responding to people in a timely manner. I sent on, I sent on the three comments we, we received that had, had kind of actionable things. The, the two comments in September have already been elevated to council and this November 29th one is actually the only one I think we need to discuss. So it's pretty long. There's certain things that aren't in planning commission's jurisdiction, aren't even in Borough Council's jurisdiction. She talks a bit about this person that commented, talks even a bit about the school district, which obviously has nothing to do with us. But let's just take a few minutes, read through and see if we want to make any motions or elevate this or a part of it to the borough.
I'll let everyone read and I've got some, some choice words about this. I think their caps lock broken button must have.
Alright, so should we kind of go from the beginning?
So I, I, before we even do that, I, I think that this, there's a couple, there's a couple of big, there's like meta-stuff here that is not the content that I find gravely disturbing, right? So this was on November 29th. So somebody took the time over Thanksgiving and signed it. We have no idea who it is, right?
We, we know who it is. I'm just trying to protect their identity by not having it up.
Okay, so.
If you scroll up in the email, you'll see it.
So, yeah, okay. So do they put into the form? Did they, they were anonymous?
They fill out a form with their name on it.
Okay, well then they're not anonymous. They're entering into the public record. You can put their name on here. That, so the, the, the concern that I have here is that this, this should not be going to us. It should not be going to the planning commission. This should be, should be referred to us, but it should be, should be going through a crafton.org or whatever it is, email for their record-keeping, not, not to us.
Well, this was submitted through our quick community visioning.
Right, which comes to us, right? But, but we're, we're not a static facility, right? We're, we're a, you know, we're a scrappy bunch that, that cobbles together a few minutes a year to, to, to work on things that we think contribute to the community. There's, there's no history of this and it's not being kept. There should be that scrapbook.
I think the website, I'm, I'm pretty sure the website has, it, it comes through Squarespace. So I believe the, the website administrator can go into that Squarespace and look at this. I don't, I don't believe it's lost once it comes to me.
Right, but I know it's not found. And, and my, my point is there needs to be governance around communication. I, I, I find this, I find this not through any fault of this group, the designer of our website or otherwise. But I think this is a perfect example because this is, this is touching on topics that are not in our domain that we need to make sure that ours are alert. And it should not be upon us to alert them of it. This should be captured, catalogued, managed by the Borough Office because they should oversee social communications like this. They should see it and they should give it to us because we're asking them to, you know what I mean? We should get this as a report from them. So there should be a governance in place that captures this at the borough. The second piece is, and I, and I think that is, that is, you know, critically important, critically important. The second piece is even more important. And that is November 29th to 12/22, that's a month, right? Between friends, that's a month. So this lady, you know, beautiful, wonderful person, you know, took the time to give their thoughts, which is what we've been asking for and has gotten a response in a month. And that should not be incumbent upon us. I think that, you know, we should ask the borough, we should ask the council or whoever we make recommendations to. I don't know anymore. We should ask them that whenever the general public hits this kind of communication, you know, I feel the same way about the service request form, there should be an automatic email. Thank you. You should be an automatic email and it should explain what the, you know, what the council, and I'm happy to write this. It should explain what the council does, what the planning commission does. And also because this is not the first time that there's a convergence of things that are the school district and, and other, other, other entities that think the school district is a big one. But they should be told that there is a meeting for the planning commissioners, planning commissioners, they're, they're welcome to come. There's a meeting for the council, they should attend. And there's a meeting for a school board, they should attend. And that should be kind of like a stock signature that goes out to anybody that fills that out. By the way, these are the community resources for you. Please get involved and we can't thank you enough for sharing this. And I should say, anything that's actionable from the planning commission's perspective, we meet, our next meeting, we've discussed each of these as they come in each month at the planning commission meeting. You're welcome to attend and talk more about this. But if there's anything actionable that we can take from that, we will reach out to you. I, I think that is really, really important because this is the fodder of, you know, why do they even have this? Nobody listens. It's just because, because we don't meet every day. You know, this isn't a full-time job for us.
I, I, if you want to take a stab at writing that, I think that's great. I don't know that that template, Matt, you know, is the best response for every single comment, you know, some are just, some are comments saying, oh, you know, so glad you're holding a vision, a vision workshop tomorrow. You know, you, would you send that same template back? I'm not sure.
I sure would. It's, and it, and it looks like what it is. It's a stock, it's a stock acknowledgement and it tells them that we're gonna look at this. But you shouldn't expect that there's something actionable that you're asking for, right? Don't expect it tomorrow. Everyone's in a coin-operated society, a drive-through society. You think that, well, we don't, we can't get to this. This is the 29th, it's now the 22nd. Thank God we're able to meet and not push it to January, right? So I, I think it's great. I think that this person is a wonderful person for taking the time and sharing some, a lot of things that I agree with, right? But we should be channeling this person and anybody who responds to, to embrace the greater of the community.
So if you can write that template, I will approach Karisma about having that be sent directly and reworking Squarespace so that maybe she's the first line of defense that receives the comments and then she disseminates anything that's actually applicable to planning commission to us as opposed to the other way around.
I'm hearing two things from Eric and I, I think they're both good things to do. The first, the first one is I think what you guys are talking about, trying to defer more of these comments towards, towards the borough first so that they are, are aware of things and, and able to act and record things that aren't necessarily planning commission-specific or planning commission-involved at all. And then the second, I think, is just on our planning commission page and where we do have the link to this survey and the advertisements for our workshops and related materials. We should maybe just make, add a sentence that makes it a bit more clear that these are, that if you have, that this is, this is a planning commission. Now, if you think about how to phrase it, but direct them to where they can log comments directly with account, with the borough.
Yeah. Roles and goals. And, and like I said, I, I, I think we should go through this, but I, I wanted to, to put a pin in, in the fact that this, this is a great point. And it's, it's a shame that, that Barbara is out there unresponded to. It's a shame that the school board doesn't have an opportunity to know that this comment even existed in a public forum. And it's a, it's a shame that the, the.
They, they could have an opportunity if I send it on. That's what I'm, that's what.
Lydia, Lydia, you're volunteering to do something that's noble, heroic and good. But you shouldn't be inviting work. That's not your job. That we, we hire people to maintain our website and our communications presence. And if they're unable to do it, then the borough needs to go out and find other people and, and grow those.
But since we're in this situation, what I'm trying to bring to the group is how should we elevate this? Or are you telling me, Eric, that you just want me to deal with it? Because that's what I'm hearing.
No, I don't want you to deal with it at all. I, I think that we should respond to Barbara and say that, you know, anything that we can act upon, and I have ideas, love to talk about the content of this. But I, I think that we should respond to Barbara and say that we've passed this along and that you should attend the council and you should attend the school board.
And I, I typically respond to people and say those things. It's just that this one was so long that I couldn't respond with what we would be even be doing because it touches so many subjects, which is why I wanted to bring it up specifically to the group and go through and explain to her, this part's for school board. This part's for the, the council. This part, we actually already have in our vision document, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And actually give a thoughtful response instead of a stock response. So I think we just all have different ideas of exactly what the best response is. And I don't think there's any expectation that they receive a response in one day. Even if it's been a month, if I, if I respond in a nice way and, and hit it in detail, I think she'll respond positively.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a lovely response. And I, I think, you know, I, I agree with Eric that you, you shouldn't have to go to that level of detail, but if you, if you.
We're already in that situation. I don't feel that I have a choice. It's, it, it's not set up so that the borough already has this information. They are the ones doing the work. So no matter what, I either have to pawn it off and know that nothing will ever get back to Barbara or I do it myself. So I, I'd really like to just talk through the actual comments and categorize them so that I can provide a thoughtful response to her.
Yeah, and I just want to say for the record, I disagree that response should come from you. I think it should come from the council. I think it should come from the council. It should come from the Borough. We should not be communicating in a one-off scenario. You, you don't ha- I mean. Maybe you do, but you're gonna, you're gonna knock yourself out. With, with that level of work, because we're only gonna, we're only generating more interest from the public. Right, and if this becomes, you, you know what I mean, it's a little turns into a lot, I feel bad. Right, so let's go through this and talk about what can be done, and then, you know, maybe we can explore more about ways. Um, that, that the comments can be acknowledged. Is that fair?
I think that's fine. So as far as the first section, it's more about infrastructure, there's curb repair. Mentioned. Halfway down, she also mentions. Road repair.
I think everything down to where she talks about the school system. That whole first, like ten or twelve lines. Curb repairs, streetlights. Um, traffic, she talks a lot about that curb that's past the school, those are all things that have come up in the vision document. Some of that particular intersection is being addressed.
Yep.
In the, um, plan that Gateway has been working on for the repaving of Crafton Boulevard. Um, I think that. Um, we can talk about how a number of those issues have already been addressed, first through the Thrive Comprehensive Plan. Things like. You know, making it more walkable and promoting small businesses, and then through specific actions that have built upon that. Such as the, um, the reap, the streetscaping that's going along with Crafton Boulevard. And. And a lot of those issues continue to be in our vision document and continue to be worked on. Again, in future projects as we can implement them.
As far as the school board piece, do. Do we pass this to. Charisma and have her decide whether it gets to school board, or do we pass it on directly to school board? Do they even invite comments like this? Maybe Eric, you know that the best?
No, they do not invite, they don't have a forum. Per se to invite comments like this, they don't operate the same way as we do. Um, I think that it's a simple matter. Um, and again, um, I, I think. You know, you ever hear the phrase, uh, shooting the messenger?
Yeah.
Forward this, it looks like, it looks like it comes from you, like you were listed, you, that you, you know, you rallied people. You didn't, right, there's some really negative, and I will say spot on, because I have an opinion. Um, there's some really negative and really spot on stuff about the. Um, about the, uh, um, uh, about the school district. And I think simply, um, sending this to Charisma and Phil, or. Again, I don't like the idea of sending to Phil, um, I think to Charisma or to a. A generic Crafton at Crafton dot com email that all of council. Uh, is on and all of, um, the, 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 the people who the manager decides should be on. Right, I'm. I don't, I don't get involved in operations, nor do I want to. Um, but I think that we should have a handle that we can forward this back to and say, hey, um. Please share this with the school board.
Yeah, I would, I would add that for, for this, for that particular comment in. In the sense of what we reply to that. Um, to that particular person with. The planning commission is. A Borough, it is an entity under, under the Borough. Um, but the school district is separate. So it's one thing to say, this doesn't go to the planning commission, but we'll forward it to the Borough. I think for the school district, for comments that are more specific to the school district, which is an entirely separate entity. It's entirely appropriate and more helpful for her, in fact. To reply and say, this is a separate entity, we, we don't have jurisdiction over this, but please. You know, contact them.
Yeah.
Share your concerns.
To contact them.
I think that's the best course of action, um, especially because, you know, we're getting these because people don't know who to contact.
Right. Is there? I know, I know the president. Of the school board is, his, um, email address is just publicly available, is there a general school district?
No, Michelle Herman's the person that you'd want to send it to, um. And again, I think it should not come from this group, I think it should come from. You know what I mean, it should.
Yeah, what I would be doing is saying. What, to Kirsten's points, you know, the school district is not an entity of the Borough, we don't have jurisdiction over. How they operate, we encourage you to contact them directly. Here, here's a contact person, that might be the right person, type thing. Just to get at, if maybe they don't know who to contact, if I just say, contact them directly, it just kind of. Doesn't, it's not necessarily helpful because it doesn't give them a contact person.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I said that the, 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 pointing them to the school board. Um, website page has everything they need to contact. And to attend and get involved, right?
Okay.
Um, that's, that's, that's what I'm suggesting. Is, you know, their, all their meetings are public, and this is exactly what they aspire to hear, um, from, from people. Who have concerns and who have, you know, insights and, and positive thoughts like she does. You know, she's, 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 she really hits the nail on the head on a couple of points there, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I think that's more, more valuable than trying to pass comments on to a completely separate entity, is to give her the.
The tools to know directly.
Yeah, let her know where, where it should go, because. We're not the right place.
So there's, so there's a three-part harmony here, um, so there, there is, um. The first section, um, which is, um. Um. I think, um. I think you, you outlined a good, good, uh, from Thrive. Um, a, a good subset of the first things until she gets to the. With all the young families moving in the Crafton midway down, right, so that section is then about, um, um. The school district, which, you know, like, like I said, we can't do much about. Um, but then the last section, um, is, um. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of mixes the two, where it says the community vision should include motivational technology learning.
It starts, yeah, there's the, it kind of transitions, it talks about uplifting and promoting small business community, and then it kind of moves back into. Back into Borough things.
Right, you know, suggesting a, like a red up Crafton, you know, spring event, I think. You know, post-COVID, that's a great idea, I, I also think that, um. Um, you know, just a, just a rec- general recommendation there is, is, I think, really interesting. I know, um, I had a lot of feedback from neighbors, I didn't know it was there. Did you guys know what, during the first lockdown? There was, uh, in the parking lot that was paved that the, the fire department owns, the, the. By the, the Rolo's Grill by the Borough building, you know, that parking lot? There was a big dumpster place there for the community.
Yep.
Yeah.
So. Is that gonna happen every year, or just during COVID?
I thought that was just COVID.
Right. That was a walk-off home run. There are a lot of people really appreciated that. I, you know, I pay attention to it. I was like, boy, you know.
I think it was, I think it was because waste management.
They'd stop the collecting.
Stopped collection for a while.
Yeah, yeah, they couldn't take your big items, if it wasn't in a bucket, they weren't gonna take it. Um, all, you know, what a great response, by the way. Um, whoever thought of that should be, um, you know, should be, uh, uh, given a bronze statue. Uh, maybe made from trash or recycled materials, but, um, but should be given a statue of some sort, but it's a great idea. And the point is, what she's speaking to is kind of have a cleanup Crafton. Um, that's great, and clean up Crafton. Have a dumpster for six days during. Whatever, you know, what, when do people clean their basements, is that May, you know what I mean, when does the weather break, and people?
Yeah.
You know, spring, spring, spring clean Crafton, you know, something, give it a nice, anyway, I, I think there's a, there's a great idea in there. Um, somewhere, um, that, um, wouldn't cost a ton of money, you know, um, that, um. I think would be very helpful, you know, and, uh. You know, um, there are community groups that are in and around. You know, Greg has mentioned the Rotary any number of times. Um, and there are people in need and, um, marrying the ability to. Take that washer, the, the reason why the washer is in front of the, the lady's house down the road, isn't because she's looking to save it. She just can't get rid of it, you know what I mean? Um, so, you know, those are opportunities for a community to say, hey, we can, you know, I got a car, I got a truck, I got a pony, I can get this down to, 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 to recycle. Or to.
Yeah, I know waste management has. Hard to recycle and, um. And more hazardous waste pickups, but you have to coordinate it, I, I think mostly the hurdle is people don't want to call and get the box and.
Right.
And report with their. You know, getting rid of, et cetera.
Right, but my, my point is, is, is different, that, because what we pay, we pay a six percent premium. In Crafton on our trash pickup, and there are certain on council who want to eliminate that next year. And the services that Crafton enjoys for that small premium, um, is remarkable, and I think that we should. We should do a better job advertising when all is involved, the electronics, recycling, the things that you can't get if you lived in Mount Lebanon. Um, that you can get out of your trash removal in Crafton are significant, and there's no wonder that we tout what that list even is, it's a shame. Anyway.
I did see a Savvy Citizen announcement recently that reminded people. Of what's available on, through Waste Management's website.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a good point, but Savvy Citizen is great, but not everyone uses it, and not everyone is very good with, not everyone has computer access. So I think that's a good. That's one of those ideas, and that last paragraph has several ideas for things that are a little bit more programming. Based programming ideas that I think are, are good ones that we can continue to talk about and, um, including just some. Marketing.
That might even be some. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, al- also just some better marketing that's not solely reliant on internet and Savvy Citizen, but to get the word out for what. Is already possible and.
Fire Hall got a brand new sign, the school, the, the Crafton Elementary School got a brand new sign, there's. You know, there's, there's, um, there's improving communications within the community, uh, Kirsten, you're absolutely right. And Savvy Citizen, you know, I, I, I made it a point when they missed, uh, uh, they missed the, uh, what do you call it, the. Um. Recycling pickup. Not my house, but this street, I called the Borough several streets. And I, you know, I, I guess Mr. Russ really, um, took offense at me saying. Why wouldn't you put on Savvy Citizen, there's been a disruption, and we'll try and figure that out, you know what I mean? And I pulled up Savvy Citizen at the time, and you know how many updates there were on Savvy Citizen from the Borough? This was at the end of October. Four. Two of them were repeats. So it's underutilized, right, it is, it is.
I think anybody can request that, that stuff, so if, if you want to take this on. You know, we, you could go directly to Charisma and ask her to. To create.
I did, that's why, that's why Russ got mad at me. Because I asked Charisma, I said, can you just put a note out? Because I, I don't need, I, I'm sorry, I like you guys, you guys can call me anytime, that's fair. Right, the managing guy, he can call me anytime, that's fair, but when my neighbors up and down the street are knocking on my door. You know what I mean, that's silly, what do I know? You know, I'm not an authority, don't ask me. You know what I mean, and they, they, they use the Savvy Citizen, so the fact that it wasn't even acknowledged wasn't the answer, that's a fail, but. Uh, that's, that's a, so I, I think, you know, like I said, I think that there's, there's some really, there's some really great ideas in there.
Even, even maybe the social committee or some of those other committees, you know, planning commission isn't necessarily suited to some of this, but. We have, we have groups that do activities, you know, they plan activities, so maybe. You know, spring cleanup activity is, is something we float to them as a. Community building activity.
Yeah.
Just, you know, relaying that we, we learned from a citizen, the idea.
Oh, a lot of this is hard, it's very difficult, and it's, it's, it's very much non-actionable from the planning commission.
But I think it's just nice to hear some of the ideas, and I think the actionable thing for us is just to think about how we, you know, as. Members of the community also. Might see some of those happening, so Eric, you've already talked about the dumpster being there more. Um, making that a regular thing, that's a great, you know, actionable idea, that doesn't mean we are, we'll be the ones to act on it, but I like the idea of the porch. Um, competitions, and I've seen some other communities do those very well.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll, I'll put together some thoughts on that, and then we'll just pass those to the, the rec committee or the social committee. Um, I think that's as far as, as we can act on it, but. We can, we can do that.
And I, I, I think that, in my opinion, Kirsten, I think, you know, we have two, we have a couple, three takeaways here. Um, if you, you know, drafted, and this doesn't have to be an all nighter PowerPoint deck and three, you know, three color glossy photos pinned on the side, just like a, a note. Um, and I think, I, I think if it goes back to, um, to the council and to. Um, the. City manager, I don't, I don't know, um, some, somebody, somebody who works for the Borough and somebody who is, uh, governing the Borough, right? Um, the, the, that, those two groups. Um. With an ask to share with, uh, the appropriate groups, it's, it's not ours to decide that, uh, that, that should go to Rec Board, or that should go to Rotary, that should go. But we could suggest it, you know? And I think that would be the way, way, way to go, is to make it forwardable for them. Um, but put it, uh, make it incumbent for them to do the forwarding, you know what I'm saying? Um, I think, uh, the, the same thing, um, I, I can take on. Um, um, the, the governance piece, sorry, have that in my notes here. Um, and then the, the, the third piece is, um, what do we want to do? Um, with, you know, this one, this one's past the goalie already. Right, there is no message on the website we can add in retrospect to give to this lady, and there's no, um, auto send on an email. Um, that she can automatically get, um, so I think it is, um, uh, it is incumbent upon us. Um, to respond to her in some way and redirect, uh, her to the, the school board website, to the council. Um, meetings, um, and to join us on Tuesdays, the fourth. Um, uh, 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 Tuesday of the month, right? Um, I think that would be a, a good thing to do. Uh, Lydia, you constantly are being assigned stuff by us. And I, I feel like, you know, I feel bad about it, you know what I mean? You're constantly doing all this stuff, can we help? Because you said you can reach out to Barbara, but I mean.
I don't, I don't mind responding to this email, I. I think that the planning commission chairperson is supposed to be the point person, and I think there's something to be said for. You know, spreading out the work, but. Besides. People volunteering, I, I kind of feel like it's. If it has to be done and nobody's volunteered, I'm stuck with it. To that point, I'm not interested in continuing as of January, as. As the chairperson, I would like to stay on planning commission, of course, but I would like somebody else to have the opportunity to lead this group. So, whether. You know, that, I think that feels true, I mean, I think, I think I feel a little overworked, and maybe that has contributed to this decision, but. I, I do plan to step down in this role as of January. So I, I hope all of you will think. Who, you know, about who you want to lead it in January when we reorganize. And I'll still set the, the January agenda and we'll move forward with the meeting. After we reorganize, but it'll be kind of led by that next person.
So Lydia, how about I will draft some reply thoughts for this email? And I'll send them to you, and you can still respond to Barbara, have it come from, from you, and you can feel free to edit and change what I have drafted, but. Sure, I'll start. Um, I'll send this to you this evening, I'll, I'll give you a draft that you can. Use or.
That'd be great. And I'll, I'll work with Charisma to reset up the website because they asked me who. The comment should go to directly. And I just thought it was easiest for them to come to my, my Crafton email address because. It would be faster than waiting for somebody to get it and then filter through it and forward it on to me, but. It sounds like. You know.
I, I want to.
Maybe it's best.
I want to take that on because I, 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 I think that that's a governance issue.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll just request that that get taken off, and it's good timing anyway if I'm not gonna be the, the chairperson, so. Um, I'll, I'll make sure it goes directly to her and then ask her.
Pointed in us, you know, I feel bad that we've let you down and overworked you. I'm not surprised to hear what you have to, to say just now. But I'm, I'm just, I'm disappointed in us. You've, you've done a, I think you've done a great job, you've done so much stuff. Thank you.
I try to do things right when I do them. I just, you know. Feel that I'm maybe not the right person to be leading for another year. I'm not. Yeah, I don't know, I'm still on this for another four years, so. We'll see what the future brings, but I, I just feel that I at least need a break this. we'll see what the future brings, but I, I just feel that I at least need a break this upcoming year, especially with so much. We've been taking on a lot with these, these vision workshops and I just, you know, I'd like to be more of a participant than in charge of everything. So, anyway, so going back to this, I, I think we have a good plan of attack. I will get back to her. Work with Charisma. If there's somebody that wants to take on um, maybe Eric, can you take a look at how the visioning um, website comment box is introduced and maybe think about adding a sentence that couches what the planning commission's.
Yeah, I, I, I want to take all that on. I, I, I really think that the, the whole user experience there needs to be uh more proactively managed about what, what they're messaging toward, right? Um, and redirecting them to other opportunities um for, you know, get them to think about what they're about to say a little bit, you know what I mean? Welcome them to say it, but understand we might not be able to act on school board stuff. Um, we can't act on really anything. We're a recommending body, not a decision-making body. Uh, but yeah, I think that they, you know, that sentence needs to be there and I think the auto acknowledgement is, is really a uh, it's a letdown, you know what I mean? We live in a world where you know, you go to a website and somebody's chatting at you, how can I help you? And now, you know, a month goes by, you only remember you sent this, you know.
I'm sure it is possible, but if, if for some reason it's not possible to set it up to give an auto reply, we can give um Charisma the the auto reply that we want her to respond with each time and she can just save it and then.
Yeah, I did, you know, the, the, the world of, of, of IT can probably explain. Um, but if it points at an address that has an auto responder on that address, it has an auto reply, you know what I mean? That there's a there's a million ways to do it. Um, and, and we don't, we don't need to solve any of them. That's why people are hired to do that sort of stuff, you know, our, our, our job is the recommended experience. And right now, we, we uncovered through no fault of anyone, you know what I mean? No fault here. It's a good example for us to learn from and, you know, but it is fault if we don't do something about it. You know what I mean? Um, but you know, I, yeah, I, I think we're good. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Charisma and all that stuff and, and see what's available and in January, if we need to decide, you know, um, something I doubt we'll need to, right? But I'll, I'll report back and say it's done.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Yeah, I, I said, when I, when I was on council, I said, you know, it's, it's a shame. Um, that uh, I, I, I had forced um, the manager at the time. Um, I, you know, I was mean old me. I said, give me a list of all of the service requests for the past year. I wonder what they are. You don't, you don't have to share with me what they are. You know, I don't need to know secrets. But how many have there been? And in 12 months, there were 77. 6,000 people live here, 12 months, 77. Now, if you go onto Facebook in 12 days, there are 77 service requests that are put out into the ethospheres Facebook. So that tells me that, you know, that's, it's misdirected, like they should be overwhelmed by that. They'd be like, we need to hire an AI bot to respond to all the service requests that we're getting, you know what I mean? That, that's, that's what I would expect at this point, the 77 in a year.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think that that's service request option was very well known that first year that it was open, but
Right.
Yeah, I hear you.
Right.
It, it should be utilized. And, and maybe that's incumbent upon all of us who know about it to start. If we see suggestions on Facebook, start responding. You know, the, the borough website has a, a way for you to take this complaint to them directly. Link them to it, you know?
Say it on the street almost every day. But I don't go on Facebook.
Okay, so let's get into this workshop, three takeaways. Um this was the PowerPoint that we summarized, we were talking through this last meeting, but decided to postpone disseminating the information until we could take one more look at the chat. Um, string from that workshop three, incorporate those comments and then take away any redundant comments that were both in the PowerPoints uh images and the summary. And then we had also added some other categories, so I, I did that whole thing where I incorporated stuff I thought was missing from the chats. Added bullets in what I thought were applicable slides. To capture any of the summary comments and especially tried to couch whether it was at least one participant or only one participant. Um, just to not misrepresent that this was some sort of you know, the entire group wanted it this way, or the entire group was suggesting in Eaton Park, when only really we heard that as one comment. I didn't want to um, outweigh any one comment over another. And then only kept in the additional comments and questions separate things that came up. And most of this came through the chat. The chat string.
Yeah.
Uh, notes, I have just some things I wanted to put out there. And then observations, I think we discussed kind of giving what our sense was without. We did, we did, we wanted to make sure it was clear if we were giving an opinion or an observation when we had no fact necessarily to back it up. So this is there for, for that category if, if there are any of those. Um, so I can go from the beginning. I don't, did, did everybody, anybody review this? Should I go slide by slide?
I saw it. I, um, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that zero council members, um, well, Coletta came late. Um, zero council members were present for the whole thing. Coletta came. Um, and as, that is, I, I appreciate that. I really do. And I always appreciate her contribution. Um, but I'm worried that it's been, uh, well it's a two months. Man, 60 days. And um, um, I've heard um, that conversation with three council members. Two of which said, um, why are you even talking about that? Um, and all three of them had not um, um, watched the, the recording. Um, I had one um, similar comment um, from a former council member um, who was adamant about why is, why is this something that we have to continue to talk about? Um, so I worry that from the people who are kind of in the know, I'm not in that group. Uh, for the people that are allegedly in the know, there is a whole lot of interest in this in any way, shape or form. Um, I think that's a shame and I know there's nothing that we can do about it. But I think that this is a good summary. Um, uh, again, Lydia, um, and Kirsten, this is your hand in this as well, I know. Um, but uh, from Rich Colton and I, we don't we, we haven't put the cycles into the, into this, the, you know, both on the front and the backside of this that you guys have. Um, what I would say is it's pretty darn good. I think the observations are tricky. Um, because I think I have a slightly different interpretation um, than you may have. And I don't hold that against you and I don't think you're wrong. Um, but I think I have a slightly different takeaway from it um, that ours may have, so I don't know how we can have a unified front in terms of observations. Um, that's, it's very, it's very difficult. What I would say is there's an ask. There's an ask um, for the council to go sit through this. Take the hour, right? It wasn't even an hour, right? Cause we started a little late and we ended pretty much on time, you know what I mean? I'll sit through the questions, all the questions at the end. But seriously, in 60 days, in our busy lives, I get it, but an hour. I think that's, that's really, you know, la- la- lacking observations that I feel like you know, we're just gonna get mad at each other, you know what I mean? Cause I'll say something, I'll, you know, be rude, you know what I mean? Cause I'm always that guy. But um, I, I think that this is really good. I think it's a quality summary. Um, and I think it, rather than observations, it would be an ask. You know, this is our, this is our summary, right? Um but uh, please, take the hour um, to hear what the community has said about this. It's, it's important context. Take, take, uh, take it upon yourself because I can send the driver, I can send him five text messages to, to watch this, you know what I mean? He was on it.
Yeah, he was on it.
He was on it. But can he do anything with it? No, because at the end of the day, they've already said, Crafton, whatever you guys want to do, we just want to move forward. We really need to move forward. We need this to move forward. This is not in our wheelhouse to continue managing this property. And it's not benefiting underneath their stewardship. It's not really benefiting anybody. Right? So Crafton, whatever you guys want to do, we're on board with, but you know, there, there's kind of a price we're trying to get to. And that's all fair from a, you know, from the, the, the fact, the matter of school board, a school uh, a council, it's, it's still a business, you know, and they have bills to pay. And I think it's a fair ask for them to make. And I think it's a letdown for Crafton to, to not, you know, authoritatively make a decision um, uh, around this. I think that there's a lot of great ideas that are unexplored. Um, um, in this that we can, we can summarize until the day is done, but you know, none of them showed up except Coletta, you know, um, no- nobody else showed up. Um, would have been nice if they did, um, but.
So I, I, I don't mind reiterating that we think they should watch it in full. We could put a disclaimer on the front of this that basically says, this is you know, these are notes, it's meant to be a summary and to get a full understanding of, of all comments fielded and all questions fielded during the event, it's crucial to watch the entire thing. And he, here's the location on the website.
Will we also be giving them the transcript of the chat? Because that was not, that was not part of the public one.
I, I wasn't planning to because I, we have it captured here and so many of those comments show answered live. And we can, I mean, I have nothing to hide. I don't mind attaching it at the back.
I would refer to just in the, just for transparency, the, there were a lot of comments that were not questions per se, and they weren't addressed live. Um, and so watching, watching the video won't show those because they weren't they weren't viewable to the public.
That's fine.
I don't see any harm in just giving them the transcript also.
That's fine. We can, we can attach the.
I, I, I agree. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, so I think it's a good idea.
I, I, I hope that they don't sp- spend time reading those comments and not taking the 60 minutes of their life to, to watch the video, but you know, um I hear what you're saying. So in the recording, it only shows the screencast, it doesn't show the, the feed. Cause I think it, I think.
Right, it was a webinar setup and so even those who participated other than the panelists, they couldn't see, it was not a, it was a webinar format where the questions are only viewable to panelists.
Yep. Well, we have a note stock with them in it, right?
We do, yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, just share that with them, you know, that's good enough. Good enough.
So I, I tried to capture um, in some of these additional comments and questions some of that, but it's, I don't think.
I think this is great.
redundancy when, when we're talking about the chat window versus this, cause I, I, I want this to be really to reflect everything as a summary and then the chat is kind of like a separate.
It's an appendix, yeah.
Yeah, like supporting document.
It's, it's for, it's for the record. Um, the summary is great. It's very thorough.
But I, I captured like this analysis of potential tax revenue. I mean, we couldn't answer those questions, but just saying that that came up, I thought was useful. So should we, are we saying we want to take out observations because they're, they're not, they're sort of biased?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I mean, a- and again, I don't want to make that decision. I'm giving you what I think is an opinion. I mean, do you think?
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't all about this slide anyway, so I'm fine with taking it up, but if, if people actually have observations they want to share, I don't mind including them.
I'm fine either way. I think the, the summary itself captures plenty. If we wanted to put more into observations, be okay with that? I'm totally okay with not having it.
Say that again?
I'm fine either way.
Oh.
If, if anyone has an observation they want to highlight, we can add it, but I think the summary stands on its own.
I agree.
I agree here too. We can remove that page.
Okay. Okay. So if we're all in agreement about this, I was planning to download it or PDF it with then the transcript. I'll probably compile it into one document, just so there's not multiple attachments.
Yep.
And the idea is to send it to both council and school district.
Can you um, uh, I would suggest make it all in one, put a bow on it. Before you PDF it, put the link uh, to the recording on the first page.
Yeah, the, the disclaimer I was mentioning, so do we want to, as a group, talk about what what we want that to say? I think it should just basically be right here on the front as a note.
Just put a text box in and we'll say, you know, please, um, please review the entire recording. The following is a summary from the planning commission. We would be happy to speak with council further about some of the ideas raised.
I think that's good.
You know what I mean? No gray, just black and white. Guys, come on, seriously, it's been two months. Can't watch.
And, and school district? About this workshop or about what?
Uh, just, we, we'd be happy to discuss with, right? No, I'd say about.
Stop it there.
Instead of further speaks, say discuss with.
Okay, so then I'll put the link to the, where the recording's held.
Yep.
Do we want this red or bold or anything?
Make it, uh, what, what colors are we using? Blue, right? We've been using blue for everything, right?
Yeah.
As you see, we surged past 100 on the survey, by the way. We're up to 125.
That's great.
Yeah.
Like that?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Good.
Right? I mean.
Yeah, that's nice. I like that.
Okay, so I'll add that link and then PDF it. Add in the transcript. And then, um.
Can I, listen, I, 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 um, in, in my, in my soul, I'm a sales guy, I guess. Um, planning commission workshop three.
Sure.
Right? Planning commission workshop three. Craft and plant, they're even better. Yeah. You know what I mean? That's a
Yeah, I think that's.
You know, cause we have a swim lane, right? And I, I, I oversay it. You know, our job is to recommend, not decide.
Should we put prepared, well, we say I'm going to say instead of from, prepared by. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, and then on this, on this topic, um I got information today that a group of citizens is um, putting together, has put together a sort of alternate idea for the property. Um, and I've invited them to give a presentation at the January meeting on what they've come up with and just discuss with us about it.
Cool.
Um, sounds like there's, from that subset group, there's overwhelming desire for um, a park area, but what they're, what they put together is kind of a conceptual idea of if it had to be revenue generating, re- revenue generating, what types of things they would like to see there. So I think it's a logical extension to this community feedback gathering process and we can kind of um, pass it along after, after they present it to the public. At our meeting, we can package the information up as well and pass that along to both school district and council. Package the information up as well and pass that along to both school district and council.
Yeah, Lydia, you started a whole movement.
I guess so. It was a pleasant surprise. What'd you say?
I, I think it's a great idea, all the stuff we're doing. We should pass that along to both council and, uh, the school board, let them know what we think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Okay, so I will. Finish that up. Anything else on? On these takeaways? I, I do plan to send this out before the end of the week.
I'm good with it.
I think we're good.
Yeah. Okay. Um. All right, and then I'll pu- pull up the meeting minutes. We can just. Motion whether we want to accept these.
It's, um, EPB. Status update, first underlined.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Cool. Did everyone glance at this, or will you need to read, read through it?
I, I had read it, because I was. I reviewed Rich's. Draft. I'm, I made, Rich, I just made like minor comments with some of the stuff. With Ingram, just to make it clear what Greg was going to be doing.
That's good, that's very good, um. Uh, and my notes were very illegible, my fault. When I was doing it, so I, I didn't really put too much in there for Ingram when I was writing it up.
Yeah, the, the salient point that Greg made is that they're not fully informed. On what the zoning means, I, I think.
And they're not really. They don't really show interest in this stuff either.
Which, which, you know, has me, that, that is, that statement has haunted me. And why I think, um, you know, not only should we sign it, say we're going forward, but get a, a, I like EDP better. Uh, to get, um, uh, the consultant to put out a little presser, you know, something. Um, so that people like the Ingram Council. Um, people like the Crafton Council, I'm not sure that they fully understand it. Um, uh, and I certainly know that the general public would, uh, probably be, uh, beneficial, that would be of benefit to them. Uh, to have a deeper understanding what zoning is, because most of us think about zoning, and they think about I'm building a deck on my house and I need to get a zoning permit, you know what I mean? Most people are not thinking about zoning in terms of commercial versus residential versus, you know, all that sort of. Design standards and blah de blah, right? But it's important stuff, right? Otherwise, you end up with a Sunoco in the middle of your town that looks like it's, um, um, on a. Highway exit, you know? Um, so, you know, there's, um, there's good reason to have these things in place. And, um. I think it would be a benefit for them to, to help us message it, because, you know, Kirsten, you're the expert, you know what I mean? But I have no idea, um, until you enlightened us on a lot of what do these things mean. Um, really how they all relate and what they mean, so. I, yeah, I think it's a. I think it's a good thing. Anyway.
Should we mention in here that? Uh, we offered, that Crafton offered to help. Greg explain. I know we had mentioned, like, if he needed help crafting. Information about, uh, why zoning is important, we would, we could help him. I don't know if we need to capture that here.
You can type, as always, we're, we, we are, we express we're happy to help in any way we can. Right? I mean, it's the spirit of all those meetings is this collaborative. But. I would say that we can, because they might need a million dollars, and I can't help with a million dollars, right?
Very good.
Cool.
Okay. And then it, it outlines our priorities that we set out for next year. Um. We'll do six thirty meetings. The motion to approve all three months worth of minutes.
This, for this clarity. You may want, uh, where it talks about, oh, never mind, it's, it's captured below. We talked about the multimodal grant and had talked about how it was delayed until next year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's Phil's comment at the bottom there.
Here, let me, uh, um, let me share my screen, Lydia, real quick.
Yep.
Um. Take a, uh, take a snapshot of this.
Thanks, yeah.
Right, that's a nice thing to put in there. We're data driven here on the planning commission. Let me know when you got it.
Hang on. I have to PDF it, I think. Maybe I can't.
You know what the snipping tool is?
I. I'm using my husband's computer, I don't know which snip tool he has, I. Just need to find the print screen. Do you mind just doing it and sending me an email with it?
Yeah, no problem.
I can, I can, uh, just include it in the Word document before I send it to Chrisima. I can't. Because you're sharing, it's like. Making my screen full and I can't like navigate to all the other stuff.
No worries. It's on its way right now.
So that, that was one thing I was just about to say was I, I didn't have a way, or I didn't go back to the survey to check these numbers.
Yeah, at the time, we were ninety-five, so we're, yeah, we're up to ninety-eight now. Or, I'm sorry, we're up to a hundred and twenty-five now. One oh eight, according to the, uh, one oh eight responded to the time request, hundred and twenty-five told the survey response, so people. Decided to skip that question, I guess. Whatever.
Yeah.
So I think it's, it's pretty darn good participation, don't you think? I mean, I, I think so.
I need to share this again, Donna. Yeah, I, I think that's really good. So I'm, I'll just paste that in, in this survey takeaways section. And date it, date the snippet, since it's going to reflect slightly different numbers than what we had discussed at the November meeting.
That's good.
You guys all have the survey, right?
Yeah, I have access to it, I just didn't go back and check it.
No, yeah, that's fine.
Could you also add the word tentatively for workshop for target date was set? Tentatively, we, we had even said at that point that we didn't want to advertise it yet, we wanted to.
Yeah, we had, we decided to wait till December to, to advertise it. I, I just was doing it yesterday, because I thought I was going to be asked if I did it today. So, um. All, we talked about earlier, I'll reach out to Colton and see if February third works for him, and then move forward with advertising. Should I wait until? You for sure get that hold taken off, Kirsten?
No.
Okay. So does somebody want a motion to accept these?
Uh, motion to accept the minutes. Prove the minutes. A second to approve the minutes, anyone?
A second back.
I agree.
Alright. Um, what is our, what is our topic for February?
The bullet, Crafton Boulevard. We're separation project.
Yeah.
So we will need to. Start that, what, that PowerPoint.
Can, um. We make lives easy for us. There's a whole layer, uh, remember Phil showed us.
On the website.
Uh, is it on a website now?
It's on the website.
The marketing arm of Alka-San. They did a whole like, you know. Thing, uh. Sign that's going to go up.
There, there's a capital improvements section of the website now.
Yeah. But did they put on the big, uh? The, the sewer sign. This is, is the picture here?
They have this whole thing.
Yeah, that.
And then describe the project. Yeah, I think this would be a good launch point for our presentation. And we're. We're focusing on introducing the project, but also. The streetscaping piece of it.
Right, which Phil, um, has already, Phil shared. Progress that's been made on that as well at our December meeting.
Right.
Um, so I'll get that information from him, and we'll be, we'll be able to discuss that as well. Which is going to make it a lot simpler, because we thought we were going to be kind of starting from scratch with that, and then instead we'll be, we'll be talking about what Gateway has already been working on. And then we can discuss any additional comments or ideas about. What that will address, but that, that is, um. That project addresses the intersection that Barbara's comment from earlier was talking about.
Right. We, we may want to highlight that directly in our PowerPoint. The Baldwin intersection, just.
Since, yeah, I think we'll, we'll, we'll talk about the intersections impacted, and we'll talk about. What, um, you know, what, what people's comments and experiences are, and it, we'll talk about what. Is already being addressed by this project and whether there are additional considerations that should be looked at.
Cool.
So.
And we're going to do it in, uh, Google. Whatever they call it, sheets again, Google sheets.
Yeah, I think, I think that is. By far the easiest that we can, we can all be able to work. And access it easily.
Is the easiest thing. To reach out to good old Bill. And say, hey, can you put all those images into a Google slide? And share it with us, and then we can start organizing it into the presentation. Is that easier than you have assets and stuff to work with, like this pretty Crafton Boulevard picture?
Sure, yeah.
Right, I mean. He, he's got it all. Right? Instead of trying to cut and paste stuff from the damn website. You know, he's got all the stuff from the ad agency. Isn't, is that, I'm just, I'm throwing out, is that easier as a starting point? Or is that?
Or at least for him to share the native files for us.
Right.
Yes.
Sometimes it's useful to have the original document, because you know how to. How to, uh. Properly cite it and things like that, if, if somebody pastes a bunch of stuff into. Uh, PowerPoint and doesn't do all that thoroughly, sometimes it's hard to make a full presentation from it, but. But we can always go back, even if he does give us a PowerPoint with images, we could always go back asking specific questions if we had them. So we'll.
We'll reach out, I'll reach out to Phil this week or next, um. You know, depending on. Whether he's available the holiday, so talk to him this week or next.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I figured I would reach out to him tomorrow and see if he's got time to talk.
Okay. And I, I can certainly help put some of the PowerPoint together. It, it'd probably be good to at least just throw up a framework, you know, that we can keep adding to.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And we will, we can have some time in, at the January meeting. To just prepare for it, since it'll be the next week, but we do, we will have that presentation, um, from the citizen group. So it won't be the only agenda item. So. Uh, anyone have anything else? I don't want to keep anyone too long tonight, since. The holiday is coming up, and I'm sure everybody has a million things to do.
Cookies to bake.
Are there any last citizen comments? See, James is still on.
Uh, no, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
James, thanks for coming out.
No worries, nice to be here.
Is there anything you were hoping to hear us talk about, instead of, you know, the droning? Of me. I know it's always, is there anything you wanted to hear about, or you're looking to hear about that you're not hearing about?
Uh, no, so, um, we're going to be speaking just kind of briefly on next meet, um, meeting about. Like, a vision that we have for that, that like, uh, space down there, that can both. Bring in revenue as well as, you know, kind of like, be a little bit more like, community oriented, but, um, nothing right now. Um.
Cool.
Yeah, very nice to. See you guys. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Bringing that stuff together with your other citizen group, and even, even taking that initiative shows a lot. So we look forward to hearing more from you guys in January.
Thank you very much.
Great stuff, thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
You guys as well.
Okay. So we'll adjourn at eight thirty-four. Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, happy, happy holidays.
Bye.